Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm Michelle Volk. I'm just, I'm the acting mayor right now. Our mayor is on his way in, so he'll be taking over. But in the meantime, we'll get going with the meeting. It is 6 o'clock on February 18th. And so I would like to call this meeting to order and ask you if you could please join us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll have a roll call, please.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Michelle Volk.
Here. The next item on our agenda is citizen comments. And usually this is typically things on that are comments that are for things that are not on our agenda. And I can see from our crowd here that a lot of you probably are here for the North Creek item on our agenda. And when we get to that, we'll be grateful to take your comments at that point. But if any of you can't stay for probably about 20, 25 minutes, and we'll get to the North Creek item, you're welcome to offer your comments now. And we would limit them to three minutes and ask you if you could please give your name and address for the record. And if there's anybody here that would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. All right. Do we have anybody online? Okay. Okay. All right. And do we have any additional agenda information?
Nothing to nightmare.
Thank you. All right. Well, then we'll start with our first presentation. The Minnesota Energy and the Friends of the Lakeville Arts Center and our Park and Rec Director, Joe Massey-Archen will start us off. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Acting Mayor, Council. Excited to be here this evening. We'll actually be doing a check presentation this evening. And I'll be welcoming up here the Board President for the Friends of the Lakeville Area Arts Center. So we'll welcome up Mr. Bob Erickson.
Good evening, members of the City Council and the city administration. It's my pleasure to be here tonight and appreciate the opportunity to recognize the Lakeville Arts Center, the success of the, of the center, and this evening recognizing a process that we've been pursuing for several years in establishing a gas kiln at the new Fine Arts Building. The gas kiln would be the first of its kind in Dakota County of any public art center. And we're looking forward to that. And we have a presentation of the check this evening from Minnesota Energy Resources. And to lead that off will be the Vice President of the Friends, Jeff Larson.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everybody. It's quite an honor to present the presenter of the check. She's Nicole McCarthy from Minnesota Energy Resources. She's agreed through their foundation to contribute $10,000 to the cost of the kiln. It's a pretty good thing for us. It's something that our large community of potters that's at the Art Center has been requesting for a long time. And it turns out that because of this generous donation, we're going to have the only gas kiln in Dakota County. So we're really appreciative of this. Nicole, would you like to come up, say a few words?
Hi. Jeff, you did a really good job at introducing me and Minnesota Energy. I'm Nicole McCarthy, External Relations for Minnesota Energy Resources. And we are really, really proud to be a part of the Lakeville Area Arts Center and to provide this donation. And we're looking forward to seeing great things come from the potters. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. How are you going to present the check? You going to do it right here?
I don't know. Did you want to do a picture with it?
Sure, we can do that.
But you could show them right now for the cameras that we have here.
Thank you.
Minnesota Energy Resources has been very, made a lot of contributions to the City of Lakeville, so this is longstanding.
Thank you very much. And next we'll go on to.
Michelle.
Oh, Bob, I apologize. I didn't realize we weren't done. I am sorry.
We'd just like to take this opportunity, first and foremost, to express our grateful appreciation to members of City Council. A year ago, the opportunity presented itself for the, to acquire and make an investment in the arts community in purchasing the former Lakeville Education Center. Prior to that, it served as the All Saints School. And your acquisition, your investment has made this possible. And I'd like, if you would, be so kind to let our new Art Center Manager, Nicole Pretzel, to step up and just share some of the success that's followed your investment, your acquisition of that building.
Thank you.
Nicole?
It's good to hear from you. Yeah, the Art Center has, because of this investment, has really experienced some unprecedented growth over the last couple of years. The additional space has allowed us to offer more performing arts classes, more visual arts classes, provide more rehearsal space for our in-house theater company, as well as rental companies that come in or partner companies that come in, and just allow us more space for other rental opportunities as well. In 2022, summer youth art programs provided 666 spaces in classes. And this summer, we just put out a brochure with 1,699. So 1,699 spaces, so about 155% increase. So that is giving a lot of youth opportunity to come into our building and participate in the arts. Total class registration income increased 120% between 2022 and 2024. So we're, that has a great deal to do with that building, as that's where a majority of our visual arts classes are being held. We've also been able to strengthen our partnerships with some arts organizations who have in the past done their performances in our theater, but are now able to do, hold their auditions as well as their rehearsals in our space. So that's a little bit of income for us, but also just strengthens that, those partnerships. And one other thing I just wanted to share is that what a week at the Art Center might look like now with this additional space. So this week, you could join us for a classical oil painting class, an observational drawing class, five beginner, five intermediate, and two advanced pottery classes. Kids could make a sloth plate and mug. They could participate in a drawing club or take a parent-child pottery class. Teenagers could join us for a wheel throwing class. And for theater fans, you could join us for one of four performances of Expressions Theater Company's "A Murder Is Announced." We also have eight rehearsals, seven spaces rented for non-art activities, and one set strike planned this week. So the Art Center is just teeming with creative energy, and the future is looking even bigger and brighter. So thank you so much for that commitment to the arts.
Thank you.
Nicole, thank you so much. I'd like to also take this final opportunity to recognize Joe Massey-Archen, who served as the Art Center Manager for a decade. You'll see the plaque that is in front of the New Arts, Fine Arts Building, which reads, "The Friends of the Lakeville Arts Center want to thank Joe Massey-Archen for his decade of service as a champion of the arts in the city of Lakeville. His dedication and contribution served as a catalyst for creativity and culminated with the opening of the Fine Arts Building." Joe, if you'd step forward, I just want to say thank you in person for your contributions prior to your recent appointment by Administrator Miller to the position of Parks and Recreation Director. Alongside of the plaque, you'll notice the, we call it the sphere. Each year, it's part of the art festival. We have a community art project, and this was the project that we selected this year. And it adorns the front, the first of its kind, adoring the new Fine Arts Building with the adjoining plaque that we felt was very appropriate and well-deserved by Joe Massey-Archen. Joe, we're the Friends, which is a nonprofit organization, which many of you know, we've raised over a million dollars in the last 20 years for the Art Center. And Joe was a big part of the past decade in making so many new opportunities come alive for the arts community in Lakeville, including just two upcoming events. Couldn't pass the opportunity. The Youth Art Exhibit, March 25th is the opening reception, which involves all of our K through 12 students in public, private schools, parochial schools in Lakeville. And that's always a significant event, especially for grandparents coming to see their grandkids' artwork. And finally, we have the newly, the newly created Downtown Art Crawl, which will take place on Saturday, May 10th. That's just two of the upcoming events. Joe, I just want to say thank you for your contributions on behalf of the Friends of the Lakeville Arts Center. Thank you so much. And again, I want to, Mayor, I just previously, and again, I want to thank the City Council for their investment in the arts. And you've learned tonight the significant demand that we have because of the, your investment. And not only is it an investment in the Art Center, but it's an investment, as you're well aware, and you are great supporters of our historic downtown. So thank you for that as well. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bob.
My apologies. I could either run up in front of a plane or show up 15 minutes late, so sorry about that. Moving on to Item B, the Minnesota School Bus Driver Appreciation Day Proclamation. And I'll turn over to Councilmember Walter if you'll read it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Lakeville Proclamation, Minnesota School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Whereas in darkness and daylight on dirt roads and multilane highways from the frigid winter to the warm spring, Minnesota school bus drivers safely transport more than 682,000 students to and from school and activities each year. Whereas the City of Lakeville school bus drivers are responsible for the safety of children across our city, often navigating challenging weather and schedules to ensure students arrive to their destinations. And whereas school bus drivers ensure students have access to education that will open doors for them for the rest of their lives, playing a crucial role in our local school system and serving an important, as important figures in the lives of children. And whereas they also play a critical, reliable support role for Lakeville families, saving parents and guardians time and expense by transporting their students. And whereas school buses are the safest mode of transportation for children, as students are eight times safer riding in a bus to school than a car, thanks to rigorous safety standards for vehicles and drivers. And whereas the school bus driving industry is the largest form of mass transit in Minnesota and has reduced its environmental impact by using alternative fuels, retrofit diesel engines and electric buses. And whereas Lakeville appreciates the dedication and invaluable contributions of school bus drivers, today we recognize these worthy professionals. Now therefore, the City, Lakeville City Council does hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, shall be observed as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day in the City of Lakeville, proclaimed this 18th day of February 2025.
Very good. And they get one extra day off this week from driving, so well-deserved appreciation. Okay, moving on to Item C, our Fire Department Annual Report. And I'll turn it over to our Fire Chief Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'd like to present the 2024 Annual Report of the Fire Department. And I'll start with our mission statement. The Lakeville Fire Department is dedicated to serving the community through the protection of lives and property by providing public safety education and professional emergency response. Just to give you a quick recap of annual activities that we do, obviously the emergency response, but also we're involved in fire prevention, which includes inspections, trainings in schools and businesses, department training, recruitment, and then a wide array of community and public events. And just to kind of give you a quick snapshot of department updates, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but just the top one there. Obviously, this day a year ago, we lost three first responders in Burnsville. But with that, Dakota County as a whole and neighboring departments beyond that helped Burnsville cover them during their time of need. And for Lakeville, we were, we did approximately about 500 hours of coverage. The Safer Grant you're aware of, as far as that, that we submitted and were awarded for 15 full-time firefighters, so that is well in motion. And then we're transitioning from strictly a paid-on-call to a hybrid department with full-time and pay-on-call firefighters. And again, just some snapshot of long-term planning that we're doing as a department. The top one you, you're well aware of. The other ones that I'm going to highlight real quick is just the advancement of our skills to better serve our community. And that includes just working general as a firefighter, so the duty crew model is three to four people, so working in small crews versus a truck with six firefighters showing up. And then some of the other areas we're really working hard at is our EMS skills as far as advancing the current skills we have, and then the equipment that we're carrying to better serve our community. From an emergency response, so incidents in 2024, we had 3,646 calls. As you can see, kind of a breakdown of those calls, I'll just highlight a couple of those. Obviously, EMS, car accidents and stuff are the majority of those, at 68%. Fires are 3% at 94, and that includes, out of the 94, 29 were building fires. And then the rest of those are made up of vehicle cooking fires, dryer, trash, and you can see outside or grass fires. Our drone team has been very busy as far as response requests, so we respond to any water rescue, structure brush fires. We do a lot more search as far as helping if somebody comes up missing. The team is 14 people as far as trained pilots. And then obviously, we're out in community public events, so you can just see some of the pictures there on the slide of what we're doing. The bottom two left pictures, you will, are at our open house. We have a drone team for that. And then also a table for them to explain to the public of what our drone team does. The two right pictures I'll highlight is us out helping search for a missing person. We took one of our fire investigation trailers that we have and expanded its role, so we actually have monitors in there, so the drones can either transmit their location or we can actually watch the video feed from the drones to see when they're looking at a field, for instance. Looking at call comparison, just from our population, and if you look from 22 to 24, roughly it's about a 5% increase. In that 21 to 22 is where we saw that, I'm sorry, from 20 to 21, we saw that significant increase, about 39% call volume increase. And now we've leveled off to what we've normally seen in our, in our past. Incidents breakdown by stations, and I'll just, the green column, or the green at the top of all four columns, you can see the previous 22 and 23 were fairly steady. But if you look at 24, those are decreasing, and that's from us adding that full-time truck. So the, the station callouts or pageouts are becoming less with a full-time staff truck. They're still needed, but it's just reducing that number of times that we're, we're calling out our pay-on-call staff. Simultaneous incidents, so out of the calls, last year we had 531 simultaneous calls happening back-to-back, so to speak. The majority of those are two incidents. And then you can see the increase there, roughly about 60-plus calls that were three incidents, four incidents, or five incidents that are occurring at one time. And that still justifies or looks at the need of why we still need to pay on-call to back up the full-time crews. Duty crew, as I mentioned, we started with our full-time staff. They actually started April 15th for 24-hour coverage, and that is a mix of full-time and pay-on-call. Our pay-on-call firefighters are required to do 12 hours per month, and during their shifts, they're looking to do pre-plans, truck checks, temporary heat, and other tasks, training assignments, and then obviously out in the community doing events and station tours. And you can see kind of a breakdown similar to the overall department calls of what they responded to. From a response time standpoint, so these are looking at the 90th percentile and emergent only, so lights and sirens calls. The blue line represents a station response, and the gold line represents the duty crew response, looking at the top line of both all incidents or EMS only. And that's kind of the benchmark we look at, is from the time that dispatch picks up the phone call until our first unit arrives on scene. Our staff truck or our duty crew truck is there roughly in about 10 minutes. A station response is closer to that 13 to 14 minutes. The second item that I kind of look at is that alarm handling. So how long does dispatch take to handle the call from the time of phone call till we're, we're alerted for that call? You can see all incidents is a little bit faster. It's around that minute 30 to a minute 50 seconds. An EMS call is a little bit over two minutes, and that's just the process for them to go through the questionnaire to determine the type of medical responding to. Fire prevention, so inspections. So one thing I always like to note in inspections is when we're out in a business, our first job is to educate the business owner or the occupant of why there's a violation and how to correct that. But with that, we did 100, I'm sorry, 1,002 commercial inspections. We issued 24 burn permits and 48 temporary heats. And then mobile food trucks was 125. And you can see some of the pictures there of our fight, when we're out in the businesses and what we find. Mobile food trucks, just to kind of recap that, we updated the ordinance in 2021, which requires all food trucks that are going to operate in the City of Lakeville to be licensed and inspected. And you can kind of see our process there as far as how the food trucks or mobile food units go through the process for an inspection. Fire prevention, that is a long list of what our, our fire prevention team is out and doing. The one I'm going to highlight is the Mobile Home Safety Day. So we partnered with Red Cross, and we installed 50 smoke alarms in that community to help out the homes that did not have them or did not have working ones. So that was a great avenue to be out there in a partnership with Red Cross to get that done. And then the last one is a state poster contest. So the, we've been doing that since the 1970s, but you can see in the bottom left of our citywide poster winner there with our Fire Inspector Jay. Department training, so as a department, we did just over 8,200 hours in training. Every firefighter is required to attend one training per month, and you can kind of see the list of arrows. Those are all the mandatory trainings that we do throughout the year. We also have required online assignments that they do, so that's meeting our OSHA minimums or requirements that we have to do. The one training I would like to highlight is just the MAC Air Lake Airport, is that MAC invited us out to go through their facility, tour the airport. And then also, I think we had two aircraft that we went through as far as just proper procedure, if we have to enter the aircraft to safety features of the plane. From a medical training certification, currently we have 39 EMRs, 43 EMTs, and three paramedics on the department. And just for a note, for 2025, we're working through alert training, so it's a new method for hostile event active shooter training. So this is going to be a joint thing that's going to happen this summer with all Dakota Police and Fire Agencies and EMS Agencies. Wellness from, from a mental and physical wellness standpoint, some of the things that we're doing as a department, obviously we've been partnered with Abijah for a number of years. Not only is that a service that our firefighters can go visit them, but they also are, come to our training so they have a known face, so that the firefighters can visit with them, but they're part of our trainings. From a fitness side, all of our firefighters get a physical every other year. They have onsite fitness center. We also do an ability test every year with them. And then as a department, we have some organized fitness events that we do. And you can see kind of at the bottom of why that's important to us as a department is that we want our firefighters mentally and physically well at the start of their career and as well at the end of their career when they decide it's time to retire. Recruitment. In 2024, we hired seven firefighters. You can kind of see the timeline, started in April, and then they started the academy in September. Like I said, we hired seven. We, we lost one early off that had to move to Texas for a job, which happens. So the six remaining are right below there, Tanner and Joe at Station 1, Vince and Mason at Station 2, and Skylar and Drake at Station 3. And in the next two weeks, they will finish up all of their training and be fully certified. So they're actually at training tonight and have their written and practical skill a week from Saturday for hazmat ops. Full-time firefighters, so as you know, we hired our first six full-time about a year ago this time. They started their shift work on April 15th. Since that time, just to highlight what they've done, they responded to just over 2,000 calls, about 56% of our total call volume. We also have three of them that are certified for infant child seat installs, and all of them are Fire Inspector certified also. So they help out with our fire inspections, and that's why we're seeing those inspection numbers starting to climb. Along with that, we completed on the left side is a remodel of Station 4. So that was completed at early off and start of 2024. And we are just finishing up on the right side. The four pictures are the remodel of Station 1. Recruitment retention, just to kind of give you a snapshot of what it looks like for the previous 10 years. Obviously, the numbers represent retired, resigned firefighters that have recruited firefighters that have left and then hired. So just to note that in the past 10 years, we've hired 82 pay-on-call firefighters, and at the same turns, 86 of those have either retired or resigned from the department. And then the bottom right graph is just kind of a year-to-date as far as years of service. The nice thing is that it's a decent balance across our department, is that we're not too heavy on the young side, so to speak, or the inexperienced side, so we have a good blend of years of experience across the board. Recognition, so in January, we held our 24, 2024 Annual Banquet. We recognized firefighter and Rookie of the Year, and their pictures are right there, Joe Tomes as Firefighter of the Year and Corey Blanchard as Rookie of the Year. And just a couple photos from a cardiac arrest, say this was from FedEx cardiac arrest that was held here in the council chambers in the early spring. We did have two retirements in 2024, Walter Browns with 30 years and Chris Mogan with 23 years of service. And then December of '24, we held our badging ceremony for Class of 2022. There are six names there, two of them were not able to make that night, so we did actually do a badging ceremony in the station two weeks ago for them. And community events, I'm, again, I'm not going to go through all of these. Some of the fun ones that we get to do is the community-wide blood drive that we're a part of, which is a pretty big event. Shop with a Hero, obviously, is a very big event. And just some pictures from there, you can see on the right side of the screen, a great partnership with Lifetime Fitness that allows us to do a 9/11 stair climb. So we have, always have a number of firefighters showing up to do that. And obviously, in July, Pan-Prague Event, so this is the third year that firefighters are doing everything from making the batter to cooking the waffles and serving them. We were just above 2023 years, 23 years. We were just above twenty-twenty-three years, twenty-three years numbers with just over two thousand waffles served. And then we also provide extra crews during downtown events in the evenings. Also, our drone team is out assisting with that. And you can see some of the pictures from the turnout there. Public Safety Foundation, which is an awesome partnership that we have in this community. Obviously, you can see their list of events, Firehouse Bingo, which is held in May. And I'll do my shameless plug that that is coming up again this year. It'll be May eighteenth at Station One, along with their other events. But some of the things that through all those events we do with the Public Safety Foundation, some of the things that they help us fund, Cookies for Open House, they've helped purchase a EMS training mannequin, Public Safety's Turkey Trot was the second annual that we did this year, but was a partnership with not only the Public Safety Foundation, but police and firefighters and families. And then they also helped purchase mass casualty medical bags. And then finally, last year on April fourth, we were part of the Twins opener that helped honor the Burnsville First Responders. So this was a great event and I was part of the planning process and it took a lot of, a lot of legwork to get everybody there and get them lined up to line the field, but it was awesome that the Twins allowed us to be a part of that day. And that concludes my annual report for twenty-twenty-four. I want to thank you for your support of the fire department, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, questions, comments? Thank you. You've certainly managed a ton of change last year, and we have a lot of change in twenty-five, so thank you for your leadership on that.
Certainly.
Thank you. Well deserved. Okay, moving on to item six, our consent agenda. Any items you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Item six K is a resolution amending the Lakeville Fire Leave Association bylaws. You might remember you did this at your last meeting. There was a small clarification that we needed to make to adhere to state statutes, so that's being done tonight. And then item six N is a resolution approving charitable gambling for the Eastview Hockey Association at Crystal Lake Golf Club. And just, it's the first time we've had this particular club do a place here in Lakeville. They do comply with their states, with their city code about having the appropriate number of Lakeville residents in their program.
Okay, very good. Counsel, any items you'd like to discuss or pull? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? If not, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, consent agenda passes. Moving on to item seven A, consider a preliminary plat for Air Lake DEA. I don't know if we have a staff reporter, Jeff Scheniker and Sean Regan are here to give us the background. Welcome. Good to see you both.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Jeff Scheniker and I'm representing Dakota Electric Association. Dakota Electric Association has interest in purchasing this property, the Outlot to the South, with plans to future develop a headquarters site. We're currently in Farmington right now. Speak to the property.
Sean Regan with Hatrick Investments, affiliated with Air Lake Development. We're thrilled to be joined here with DEA. I think they're going to be a passion to our fine city. We've been working on developing for many, many years. And thanks to staff and everybody involved helping us get to this place. And we got a few more steps and look forward to getting to the end of the road to see dirt flying.
Very good. Turnover Ms. Goodroad for staff report.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. As I mentioned, Dakota Electric and Hatrick Investments have submitted a plat or preliminary plat, the first step in a few steps for this process. So the property is located north of two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street, east of Cedar Avenue. It's the one outlined in blue or in red, I should say. This property is formerly known as the Adelman Property. It was annexed into the city back in twenty-twenty-one, so some people will remember it by that name. The property is Zone I-two, General Industrial District, and it's guided in our comprehensive plan for industrial. And so this first action tonight is a preliminary plat to create two outlots. And the reason for the creation of the outlots is it prepares the property for sale. The north portion or Outlot A will be retained by Hatrick Investments, and it's intended that Outlot B would be developed for the Dakota Electric facility. So they'll be moving their facility from Farmington to this site. The plat meets all of the requirements. They're including right-of-way designation, dedication for the extension of two-hundred-and-twenty-second Street into the future. That's not something that needs to be built or will be built now. You will see the preliminary plat for Outlot B in that development plan early March. We're actually bringing that to Planning Commission this Thursday. So this first action is a preliminary plat to create the two outlots. You'll see a final plat and then the second phase of the final plat for Outlot B in the near future. And I stand for any questions.
Okay. Counsel, questions, comments? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion. Joshua.
Move to approve a resolution for the preliminary plat of Air Lake DEA.
Second. Any further discussion? I'll just say, I'm very excited about the economic opportunity that this will bring to our city. So DE, Dakota Electric, thank you. I've expressed that to your leadership and Hatrick and Regans, thank you for putting this together. So this will be an excellent addition to Air Lake. And with that, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Aye.
Hallier.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item B, North Creek Manufactured Home Park Conditional Use Permit. And I believe we have an applicant here and then we'll have a staff report.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Jay Van Tassel. I am representing the ownership group that owns the North Creek Estates Manufactured Home Community here in Lakeville. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you. Want to thank your staff that's been very helpful throughout this whole process, starting with Frank Demsky, who's since retired, and now Tina Goodroad, who's been excellent. We purchased the North Creek Estates Mobile Home Park in December of twenty-twenty-one with the intent to expand what was known as Phase Three, which was previously approved back in nineteen-eighty-nine. We began this process in Q-one of twenty-twenty-three. And as I mentioned, have had excellent interactions with the staff. And we've, we held a neighborhood meeting in October of twenty-twenty-three and received a lot of feedback on the project. And we adjusted where we could to make this a good development for everybody involved. And then we also held the public hearing two weeks ago and heard additional, additional feedback. One of those concerns is the, the investment that, that, or perceived lack of investment in the existing community. And we, we hear their, their concerns on that and have, have made it a condition of the conditional use permit to, to, to invest heavily in the existing community as well. And we're open to having that be a condition of the certificate of occupancy. So we, we look forward to, to, you know, working with you guys and, and providing affordable housing to this, to this great city I have here, so.
I have a quick question for him.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Volk.
I have a quick question for you because you talked about the investment and in the, I don't know, one of the memos that I wrote, read, it talked about the fact that there was, you've already invested five hundred thousand dollars into this park, but that it's unseen. What is the five hundred thousand dollars unseen?
Yeah, yeah. So we, I would say most of it is unseen. There have been some, some improvements. We've improved the, spent about seventy-five thousand, improved the community clubhouse. We spent about a hundred thousand on the roads, done about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of tree work. And then a lot of infrastructure, water, you know, water improvements, you know, that's got some, some aged inventory or infrastructure there. So we've put some in there as well.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions before?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I did want to make a comment. There is an interpreter that's helping out this evening, so I just want to make sure that they're hearing me okay. Okay. If I talk too fast, flag me down. All right. Okay, so Dirt Boys Incorporated on behalf of North Creek LLC, North Creek of Lakeville LLC is requesting a conditional use permit to expand the existing North Creek Manufactured Home Community. So this new addition is highlighted in yellow. It's immediately south of the existing North Creek neighborhood and immediately north of the existing Country View Trail, or Country View Manufactured Neighborhood and just west of Pilot Knob. The property is zoned RSMH, which is Single Family Residential Manufactured Home Park District. And the properties to the north and south that are similar are under the same zoning. The expansion for the park will include a hundred and thirty new home sites. And then there are a couple other lots for some of the other buildings. The property includes the one parcel at twenty-six point five-two acres. And again, the property is owned by North Creek of Lakeville LLC, who owns the existing Manufactured Home Park. And this property has been zoned for Manufactured Home Park since the nineteen-seventies. So you can see the phasing plan, the first portion of the development of a hundred and five homes took place in nineteen-eighty-four. The second phase of sixty home sites in nineteen-eighty-six. And then the Phase Three plans that we were able to find in the files accounted for a hundred and forty-one home sites. And this was submitted in nineteen-eighty-nine and again in nineteen-ninety-seven. We can't find records as to why it wasn't developed at those time. But again, all of this property has been zoned for Manufactured Home Park for some time. This is a layout of the existing conditions. This is a layout of the roadway network. So across the site, the road pattern is very similar to the original pattern. Main access will be to the north, accessing the existing neighborhood with an emergency access only to Country View. And then the alignment of the streets that accommodates the different home sites. I'm going to back up one slide. The property does fall within the Shoreland Overlay District of North Creek, so we have to then apply the Shoreland rules. All of that has been evaluated by our natural resources team and has been found to meet all of the requirements of the Shoreland District ordinance. And so here is the layout. Some of these maps, I apologize, are a little fuzzy from how we're able to cut and paste them on the slides, but you can see the creek. There is a infiltration basin on the north, a detention pond on the south. You can see the street alignment. And then the hundred and thirty home sites are distributed across the site. There is a play area basketball court that has been planned. There was conversation about this at the Planning Commission meeting, but that's what that corner property is. And then this area, as well as over here and to the south, there are spaces for guest parking. There is a storm shelter that will accommodate the neighborhood in this location, and that will be further reviewed and undergo building permit review as well. And then there is a playground in this location. So again, you can see the main access point through North Creek, and then there'll be emergency access point in this location. So that's the overall layout of the project. The lots range in size from four thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet to thirteen thousand nine hundred and five square feet, with an average between forty-seven seventy and forty-nine fifty square feet. Each of the home sites will accommodate two cars, plus there is the guest parking distributed across the development. One of the things that the applicant is providing, you can see here, and then I'll show on the landscape plan, a row of trees overstaring evergreens along the west property line. And there's also a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence planned along the west property line. That fence extends and wraps around the corner till about this point and then turns into a chain-length fence, which will serve as the gate, and it'll be emergency access gate only. Then that chain-linked fence will extend along the south property line and then wrap around the pond. So the pond is completely enclosed with a chain-linked fence. One of the things that was brought up at the Planning Commission was a request that gate be a minimum of six feet in height, and that has been made a condition and the applicant has confirmed that. And then the fence along the south property line that originally was planned to be four feet in height has been changed to six feet in height. So it's been confirmed by the applicant, but also added as a condition. And then here you can see the landscape plan. Almost every lot has a minimum of one tree in the front. Many of the lots have additional trees in the rear, plus additional landscaping that's been provided along the west property line, some additional trees along the north and along the south property line as well. And then there is the detention pond that separates the homes on the Country View side from homes that are within North Creek. And again, that will be enclosed with a fence. Here are the final conditions. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. There were several folks that spoke. Many may want to speak again this evening to you. And again, some of those conditions were changed regarding the fence height, as well as a limit of no construction traffic for the development of this site can occur through the Country View development. It can only go through the North Creek. So that was another additional condition that was added. That's all I have for my presentation. The applicant, their engineer, and local team are here to address any questions that you may have.
Okay. So I have a question for the applicant. You know, I, since the conversation about this project has started many weeks or months ago, I got significant feedback from residents of the North Creek. I don't know if you want to call Phase One or whatever the, the official title is, of lack of investment by ownership over the years. And I know you have, you've only opened it for three years now or whatever. And so I want to address that because then in the Planning Commission meeting, somebody from your team had mentioned, well, now that we have some capital to invest, we'll do that, which I appreciate. But now I'm thinking twenty years from now, what kind of assurance can we have as a counsel? Because these are private roads. We're not going to be going in there assessing things, that your entity, your enterprise will maintain the infrastructure there in, in the new neighborhood and in the one, the existing?
No, it's a great question. And that's, that's, you know, our, our goal is to have well-run, well-managed communities. I mean, you can see we've spent five hundred thousand so far in the, in the time that we've owned the, owned the community. And, you know, we, we have projects that are conditionally approved outside of this development and the projects that we've mentioned that we could do in conjunction with this project, that we will continue to, to operate and invest in this community. That's, that's, that's how we operate as a, as a company as a whole, is to invest in our communities.
Are there other communities in places that you have bonds or letters of credit with the city? You know, a backup to say that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Could I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Volk.
In the Planning Commission meeting, when the question was brought up about the improvements, I believe your comment was that you weren't sure why they were deferred. And what, what did you find out between the Planning Commission meeting and now as to why there was deferment on some of the things that you had promised the residents in October of twenty-three?
Are we talking about the projects that we've talked about doing in conjunction with, with the expansion? Namely, we talked about, in conjunction with the expansion, resurfacing roads, new playgrounds, new mailboxes and new signage?
You, you kind of had promised these residents some of this stuff at their very first meeting with you. And then, so when it was brought up at Planning Commission, I believe you said you weren't sure why they were deferred.
I think there may be some confusion on that because when we sent out the letter announcing the neighborhood meeting, we-
This is in twenty-three now?
This is October twenty-twenty-three, correct? We, we put in that letter that, you know, in addition to doing the expansion, we also will have the access to capital and the economies of scale to do these other projects in addition to. That makes sense. And so the, the plan going into October twenty-twenty-three was we're going to do all this together because, you know, we've got the contractors there. We don't have to pay for, you know, the pavement company to come out twice and, and all the, the- and, and all the expenses that that comes with. And so this was always kind of bundled. Not that we weren't going to do it, like, but this gave us an opportunity to just do it all in one swing. And so that's, that's what we, that's the message. And it may have gotten a little convoluted. And I apologize if that was unclear. But that was the message that, that we, we provided, is that it was always in conjunction. We, and as far as why hasn't it not been done yet? We honestly, like, we, we didn't understand that it would take this long to go from October 2023 to where we are today to get that. Obviously, there have been some, some changes that we had to make to the, to plans, which we've done. But it was always kind of a, you know, we're just going to do all this together with the expansion.
Did you do anything this past summer to kind of help build some community support?
Yeah, I would have to, we've, we've done a number. Like I've said, we've done a number of, of projects, capital improvements to the community. A lot of it has been water infrastructure, taking out old lines, improving those. We, we've done, as I mentioned, trees. That was, that wasn't this summer. That was in the fall of '23, if I remember right, fall of 2023. Now, I understand that there's more to be done on trees. There's a lot of trees out there. And we're, we're, like I said, that's, that's conditionally approved to get some more done this year. So those, those have been some of the projects that we've done.
Okay. Any other questions? Joshua, Councilman Lee?
Thank you for answering all the questions. I mean, I think what, what's before us today is a CUP that, you know, there are legally binding criteria that we're going to, going to need to really focus on when it comes to this decision that aren't related to the current neighborhood. Suffice it to say, I think it's, it's disappointing at the state of what that current neighborhood is. Having driven through it yesterday, even having the front sign look like it's missing letters. It's the small things that really, I think, have an impact on the overall quality of life in any neighborhood. So I know you're representing the client here. And, and, and so I appreciate you standing here and taking the feedback. What's not in the CUP is a condition for these improvements. And so I guess my, my question, and maybe it's not necessarily to you, but is how are these documented to be certain that those improvements to the current neighborhood are followed through on? Since it, it's not a condition of the CUP.
Absolutely. And, and to, to show good faith and that we're committed to this and have been from the beginning, you know, we'd be happy to have that be a condition of the certificate of occupancy or whatever kind of finalization documents you guys or, or permit that you guys give. We're, we're happy to have that documented to, to ensure that, that that happens prior to, you know, you know, finalization of that, of that community and us being able to bring in new homes to that, that phase.
Appreciate it. One technical question. The gate that's for emergency vehicles only, is, only, is that an opticon activated gate or is that a code? What, what kind of gate is that?
Like the smart guy up here.
Joe Maylander, engineer on the, on the project. That is a, that is simply a 30-foot-wide sliding steel gate, six-foot high. We went with a vertical kind of bar, so it's difficult to climb. But it's not, it's a manually sliding gate, manual sliding gate.
So it, it's accessible? It's not locked, is what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're certainly want to work with fire department. If, if they are open to us putting a fire department-only lock on it, we would, we would do that.
Yeah, we have that in other places in the city. So we'll have you.
Okay.
We want you to work on that for sure.
Yep. Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for the city attorney. One, how would we word in the CUP about the stipulations related to occupancy? You know, do something like we wouldn't, the city won't issue this occupancy permit until the other conditions are outlined? Or how, how would we do that?
You would need to have specifics regarding what had to be required. And it, it couldn't be vague. You'd need to have specifics. So I don't know if you're prepared to do that at this time.
Well, yeah, at one point, there was an email, an email. I just don't have it right in front of me of what the specifics were. I don't know, Tina, if you still have that. So maybe we'll work through that. And then my other question, actually, I'm going to save that. You can sit down. Okay. This is not a, a public hearing, but it's tradition that we do offer opportunity for the public to address the council about issues. My encouragement is for you to keep it to two to three minutes and try to avoid repeating the people who've gone before you, just out of everybody's respective time. When you do come up, just state your name and address for the record and give our clerk enough time to, to write that down. So I will now open this up to anybody that would like to address the council about this project. Come on up. We got somebody coming behind you.
I'm Jaleen Christensen. I live at 17357 North Creek Drive. I thank you for asking some of those questions and putting it in a stipulation that our part will get attention now if it's a condition. So I feel good about that. Some concerns that we do have is that where they have the basketball court, it's really close to the creek and the only road coming in and out. So the basketball court, we're worried about the traffic. Children playing right there. So maybe if that could get moved or I don't know what to do. But we just feel it's too close to the only one road in and out of the expansion. Also, the storm shelter. According to the square footage, it's 1,975 square feet. Divide that by four square feet per person is 493.75 residents should be able to fit in there. With 132 homes times by four people, that equals 528. So there's not enough room for residents, according to their square footage. Also, the existing storm shelter, square footage is 1,456 square feet. Divide by four, 364 residents should fit in there. We have 158 occupied homes times four, which makes it 632. That one's not big enough for all of us. The middle section, they don't even have a storm shelter. So, I mean, where do they go? Like our signs are like, they're hand painted, but you guys addressed all that already. Another concern is with this new expansion, all these houses are going to look so pretty. Are they going to be able to come at us that have older trailers and make us redo our homes to look like the new expansion? Like peak roofs, vinyl siding, shingles? I mean, are they going to be able to do that and make us change our homes to look prettier? Which I don't think is fair, but I think that's all. Thank you.
So a couple of those questions, we'll, once everybody kind of, we'll get opportunity and go through them.
Name's Leroy Omen, 17252 North Creek Drive. The things this guy just said flat out lies. First of all, it's a one-lane bridge.
You can just keep your comments to us, please.
Okay. He mentioned $500,000 worth of repairs. What has he done? We got trees falling on our houses. We got drains that don't work. He can't even seem to plow two inches of snow. Can't, can't clear the streets. I don't know any development that he's did other than buy a couple of brand-new vehicles, put a new office in. Ain't helping anybody. So there's, there's a lot of things here. And, and when you add up all them houses, they're going to go in there if they get across that one-lane bridge that's, that floods out every year. Did he mention that? And then if you add all the cars, at least two cars per house, we can't get out of our road right now on, on Pilot Knob. What are you going to do? How many house, how many, I can't do the math that quick, but we were right. It's not going to happen. What is this guy, nuts or something? Like Schmidt, not, we just don't like it. It's just, God, it's just, we've been asking for things to get accomplished and accomplished, accomplished. He's, what, simple things, cutting down trees that are falling on our houses. Can't seem to get that accomplished. I'm just, I don't know anything else, guys?
Yeah.
I'm out of here.
My name's Clifton Colley.
Just one second. Hey.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be here all night if we can't be efficient with Howard. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. My name's Clifton Colley. I live on 5890 West 176th Street on the back of the Country View Park. And, uh, well, in, in the first place, in, in the back where they're going to build it, is it, it's the wetlands from the creek. And every, every spring, there's an overflow of water, especially up by Pilot Knob, there's a big reservoir. Anyway, uh, back about 20 years ago on 160th and Pilot Knob, they built some houses. And a couple of years later, all the basements were leaking from the runoff. So they, they better have the DNR or whatever associated, who's going to do the landfill. Anyway, uh, when my backyard, they, they're going to put up this fence. And I'm going to have to tear down this eve of my shed because they're going to come right across there. And so maybe if they could back off a few feet, that'd be fine. But put up six-foot fences and then have, what, 130 single wides that are rentals? Wow. Then the noise pollution and the bugs. Because there's three or two ponds back there. And one of them is, oh, it's all dried up now after 30 years. But at first, there, there was a refrigerator just thrown out there and, you know, a bunch of garbage. Anyway, that's dried up now, but it's still a mess. So that's part of the landfill project. And then we have a field where a lot of bikers, kids go out there mess around. And then there's Country View north of the creek. Nice name, huh, North Creek? Anyway, this project, the diagram, is south of the creek, right next to Country View. And it's so close to Country View that the noise pollution, we'll call it, and it, it's unbearable. So, thank you.
You could, you could say your wife, Sandy.
Sandy Colley. Is it barbed wire or, or not barbed wire, but chain link? Or is it vinyl like on the other side?
I believe they said chain link, but I'll add it to my list of questions. They're nodding, chain link.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and another thing, we live right by the dead end on the Country View Trail. And that's going to be their emergency exit. So how are they going to get in off of Pilot Knob onto their, their property? They'd have to go through North Creek, which is north of the creek. And that's a lot because they'd have to go through that and then get to their, their park. It seems like they're going to be using Country View Trail a lot.
Okay. Thank you. Hi.
My name's Shawna Khan. And my address is P.O. Box 17370-5408, St. Paul, 55117. My residence is on 176th Street. Backyard backs up to a pond that goes into the field that then goes over into Vermillion River into North Creek. Mr. Gusterson has done a wonderful job at keeping riffraff out of Country View Trailer Park. We have a lot of rules and regulations that we have to follow. We have extremely strict background checks. If you don't pass those background checks, you're not allowed. I, when I bought my first trailer there, I was $20 short a month to be able to rent. But the manager at the time kind of led us through because my family had lived there. This is when I became an adult, right? North Creek don't have that. North Creek has a lot of riffraff. North Creek has a lot of, of police activity that Country View doesn't have. Like to have, I'm not saying it's all of North Creek. I'm just saying that there's more there than in Country View. To be able to keep that out of Country View, what's a chain-linked fence going to do? I can climb a chain-linked fence. My grandchildren, five years old, can climb a chain-linked fence. What's going to keep them out? They're going to use our playgrounds? They're going to use our pool? They're going to use our storm shelter? Where, why do we have to have to deal with that stuff? I've also noticed since the housing has gone up on 179th, police activity has also increased over there. I no longer live, I no longer feel like I live in the country. When I first moved up here in '87, I now feel like I lived back when I lived in South Minneapolis. How are they going to be able to control that? Are they going to change their rules and regulations to keep riffraff out? Especially if they're rentals? If they're rentals, how are you going to do that? And I didn't think we could rent out trailers in, in Dakota County. So that's a big concern. That and the wildlife, that's a huge concern because now there's going to be more dead animals and crashed cars on Pilot Knob. Because where are they going to go? I have seen a six-point buck in my backyard before. Where's that going to go? That's kind of what we're worried about. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm just going to encourage everybody to keep comments respectful amongst our neighbors here. So just moving forward, let's just remember that. Yep, thank you.
Deb Wilson. And my address is 17590 Eureka. I live in Country View. I've lived there for almost 30 years. At first, it was all we could afford, which affordable housing, which I don't think it is anymore for these fine people. Now I choose to live there because I could choose to live in Charleswood or Nelson Hills. But there's such a great community of people there. And my kids always had a saying growing up that if you mess with one Trailer Park kid, you mess with all of them. It is, I feel safe there. I would walk the dog in the middle of the night. No one would bother me. So I'm not worried about the safety of what's coming in as opposed to what they're doing to that community feeling. And I know, I work for the city of Bloomington, so I kind of know how this whole thing operates. But you're for the people, right? Just remember that when you make these decisions, that we all have this love of this, I mean, unfortunately, it's their land. I get that. But it's been near to dear to all of us. Our kids have ridden their bikes back there. We all walk our dogs. It's like a community place that we meet up and we feel at home. And it's just going to be sad to lose that. And it, it hurts my feelings to know that what you've done to these people.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Joyce Mallory. Address is 5640 Evellith Court. I sit right on the corner of Evellith and Europa. When you look out my front door that faces, um, at Europa, I see the field. We've had, I've been there for 38 years, so I'm a very long-term resident. I have seen deer. I have seen flocks of eagles. We have many, many eagles in that area. Geese, ducks, and an occasional collie coyote. That's their home. Their home is gonna get disturbed. Residents along Country View fence line, where they're saying that the fence has to go in, are gonna be required to move property such as sheds at the owner's expense. Why? Those buildings were there first. That fence, I feel, should not be encroaching on that. They can move the fence instead of the people who have the sheds be required at their expense to move it. 125-plus new homes going in times two vehicles, that's 250 more cars on top of what's already coming and going. Okay? I don't know, I'm sure you're all very familiar. Country View has one entrance, one exit. North Creek has two. Many times, to make a left-hand turn out of Country View, you're putting your life in your own hands because it is so dangerous. At one point, when the stoplight was installed on 179th, there was, um, they were monitored so that light at, down by, um, 170th by the school there, was in conjunction. So, it was easier for residents of Country View and North Creek to get out of the homes, you know, out of our park. Sure, they say make a right-hand turn, go to the next thing, and do a U-turn. Again, we're putting our life in our own hands trying to get, to go south on, or excuse me, to go north on Pilot Knob. My question is, control that intersection for North Creek and for Country View before? How many more people are gonna have to die because of car crashes? Also, increase in school buses along with the 250 vehicles. Now, where I sit, I look out off my deck, I see the mailbox shack, and this gate that's gonna go up that will have emergency access for, for fire, rescue, and police will be kitty-corner for me, okay? In order for them to get that gate up there, they're gonna have to have construction vehicles, guess what? Come right past my house. All that noise, all that traffic, what's it gonna do to our property taxes? And the safety in our community? Dan Gustafson has been amazing as a park owner. Like I said, I've been there 38 years. He has done an outstanding job. Again, very, very strict applications. If you've got a felony, you're not getting in. Sorry. You know, we have a fair amount of safety, nature, and everything else in our area. People aren't gonna be able to go out in that field, you know, in, in that area and walk their dogs and take their kids out to explore. So, I'm, I'm hoping that you guys take it to your heart, both men and women, take it to heart and deny this permit. Thank you for your time.
Again, just a reminder, I'm trying to keep it to three minutes.
I know. Couple things. Good evening. My name is Kurt Mekas. I'm one of the bad people from North Creek. I live at 17265 North Creek Lane. I was here at the planning commission, and there's been discussions about the traffic, all the other stuff. We don't even know who owns the bridge, what's gonna be done to the bridge. We have, uh, in our rules and regulations that we signed when we came into North Creek, it says, "No semis are allowed in the park." We can drive through. So, if we follow these rules, how are they gonna follow the rules and allow low boys in to do the construction back there? And I have only one more thing I'm concerned about, and I've already talked to our association president about it, and I'm concerned about safety for the children going down North Creek Drive. And I think that's a big thing. There's a bike path that comes right out of the, uh, right next to the creek. My concern is for the children on their bicycles because there's a fence there that the city put up because the landowner or the land renter, Kevin and Debbie, requested the city because of the, all the swearing that was going on the bridge and all the drugs that were smoking, and they were church-going people. Well, that fence there is gonna stop any visible kids coming down. And if you're gonna have that road right there where the bridge is, and if you look at the map, they're gonna get killed because oncoming traffic won't see them in time or the kids won't see the traffic. My concern is safety, and I thank you for your time. Please don't vote this in.
I'm Michelle Granamas. I live in Country View at 5840 West 176th Street, which will be up against the retaining area for the water. What is the rules and regulations for how close that water can come to our homes? They're gonna have a fence. What's the restriction time? Where, I mean, for the physical place for that water? How far away from the homehouse are they supposed to be? You don't see them on top of regular-built homes, so how close is it gonna be for our mobile homes? I've been in the park since 92. I've seen all the housing built up around us, and we've lost all our face to be able to breathe. That would've been a gorgeous place for a walking area or a bike path or just natural animals, your eagles, your foxes, your deer. And we're losing it all because people are greedy for money. Thing I'm noticing is, why would anyone buy a house that all looked the same? That's gonna be rental. That's not gonna be property for them. No one would buy a house that looks just like the neighbors. Not gonna happen. And if they do, they're gonna be people that are looking for a place that maybe can cause trouble. I really hope you guys take your time and look at that area, drive the area, see what it really looks like instead of taking the word from one that all they wanna do is build
Good evening.
I'm Amber Kipley. I live at 17265 North Creek Drive. I actually came here just to listen today with zero intention to come up here and talk until I heard the gentleman with his plans for fixing our part of the park. I have a letter from 2023 about the tree removal. It got moved six months. It got moved six months. It got moved six months. I was also told that they're not going to do all of them at once. They are dead. When I asked the office manager what would happen when all the snow falls on the trees and they land on a house, his answer was, "We will deal with it when that happens." A tree fell between my daughter's house and the neighbor's house. We got it out of there. The other half of the tree is still leaning over the neighbor's house. They were made aware of it, and the answer was, "Let it fall on your house, then you can go after her insurance." I don't believe that they're gonna make the improvements on the driveways or the trees or the, I don't believe any of it. So, if you're gonna make this condition of all of that, I ask that you be very, very specific. Those trees are dangerous. The playgrounds are dangerous. That's all.
My name is Jorge Rodriguez. I'm at 5870 176th Street West. I have been living in Country View for a long time. Very peaceful and beautiful neighborhood. From what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, the infrastructure is not there. The money's not there. I've heard complaints from a long time that have not been taken care of. It seems that the plants have been there since the 80s, uh, late 80s, which is crazy for me to think that a lot of changes would happen now. It seems like they're just cluttering this place, and they're gonna affect a lot of good people that have been living there for a long time. As weather is and things are getting crazier, I think that, uh, the infrastructure is just not gonna be good enough to, um, keep everyone safe. As the plans reflect where, you know, the shelter and the playgrounds are, they're not very well thought out from what I see. It sucks to hear that now the Wall Street and a lot of people who have the money are, you know, grabbing all these lands and just trying to stuff them with rentals where there are just one single home rentals. We have double-wide, single-wide homes everywhere, but this one section is just gonna be single-wide? It's gonna be a cluster. The ponds, the mosquitoes, there is so much to think about. It would be crazy for you guys to let them do this to a lot of people. Thank you for your time.
John Aguilar, 17570 Eureka. I'm part of the, uh, Country View Mobile Home. I moved in there with my wife three years ago. We downsized from a house to a mobile home. And with this development, that, that other mobile home park with those 125 or 30 single-wide mobile homes at Country View, you have to pass a background check, um, be good, basically be upstanding people, you know? Don't get into trouble, go to work like we all did. Concern would be all those mobile homes in that back lot, the traffic that comes through Country View Trail to access what they're looking to do back there. More traffic, the, the streets are gonna get pounded, you know, with more traffic and such. So, and when I downsized, when we started looking at mobile home places, um, Country View, um, they're very strict, which is fine. That's good. It keeps the riffraff out or some sketchy things that go on. Our park is quiet, it's well-kept up. The owner, um, listens to what we all have to say in, in the newsletters and their little, you know, uh, questionnaires that they send out, you know? What, what could they do better for, so on and so, you know, so on? And this new proposed development, is it gonna be all rentals? Are we gonna have, are they gonna have, um, a string of U-Haul trucks in there every month? Bring them in, move them out, bring them in, move them out? So, you know, I'm just looking out for the peace and quietness of Country View, and that's all I have to say, and thanks for your time.
My name is Dan Gustafson. For better or worse, I'm the owner of Country View. I grew up five miles from Country View. I'm a registered landscape architect, so I understand land development. I constructed Country View back in 1972. And, uh, from my own experience when I was in college, living in a 10-by-45-foot, uh, trailer, as they were called back then, uh, it was, it was tight. But I developed an appreciation for the affordability and the legitimacy of manufactured housing. And for that reason, I have considered Country View, which is the only manufactured home park we own, uh, as something as a community that we have felt very strongly about. And, uh, I sent a letter to, uh, Mr. Mayor and the council this week expressing my concern, really not so much representing my own financial interests, but representing the concerns I have for our residents and the children. We have a lot of events, uh, for, uh, our residents. The open door has monthly visits to our property. Some of you have attended our, uh, National Night Out. Police and Fire have been there. And so, I'm speaking not only for myself today or this evening, but also for the safety of our residents. And in that letter I sent, I pointed out some concerns that I have. One has to do with the fence, um, and I, I give credit to, to the proposed developers here because they have, uh, uh, they've paid attention to some of our concerns, the first of which was a four-foot-high gate. And the original intent, which was just to connect the two communities, um, they responded to that. And regarding the gate, we would prefer that to be under the jurisdiction of Police and Fire, that management of North Creek should have no access to that, uh, gate. We're pleased that the gate is now six-foot high. I'm not pleased with the type of fence that is on our south line right now, while it may be opaque, but it's already falling apart. And those, those boards are not, it's a vinyl fence. I, I have concern about it. I don't like chain link fences, but it's none, they're probably going to be more durable. And I did make a request for a seven-foot fence, and someone said, "What's the difference between a seven-foot and six-foot?" Well, I was checking, I was selecting a basketball team. There is a big difference between seven feet and six feet. So, that's, that's a request of ours. We understand that the main reason we feel the fence is so important is that we have the, our community backing up against the, the pond. And the sedimentation pond is, is a very important part of their development, but it's also an attractive nuisance for kids playing in their own backyard. And for that reason, we would also request that the, um, the fence and the barrier be constructed completely before any construction begins in North Creek for the safety of our Finally, um, without the intention of, they have a business, we have a business, uh, but we are committed to affordability and the quality of life for the people in Country View. And for that reason, I would, uh, ask for serious consideration for our requests. I can't resist the opportunity to say, in terms of affordability, the rent at North Creek, if you moved in there today, is 40% higher than it is at Country View. Forty percent, over 40% higher. We are committed to affordability. Country View offers a lot for the community, but we are still the most affordable community in Dakota County. And, uh, one final thing, I've heard it represented at the October meeting a year and a half ago, that all these houses were gonna be rental. We do not allow rentals because we've had some bad, bad experiences with rentals. If you can't qualify for a mortgage, you rent. I have no problem with rentals. I have no problem with rentals, but I have some concern because at the public hearing, I had a private conversation with the developer, and they assured me that the houses were all going to be for sale, every single unit. And I'm paraphrasing. And so, I know that the council may not have any authority or jurisdiction over that, whether they're for sale or for rent, but I can assure you from my 50 years of experience, there tends to be a difference. And for that reason, we don't allow rentals. We make them as affordable as possible. We have less expensive and much more expensive houses, but we're, and we are not particularly concerned about who you are, but we were the first community in the state of Minnesota that subscribed and was accepted to the Minnesota multi-housing crime-free program, which, as some of you may know, we work directly with police, and we have an individual assigned to our community, and we do not, we do not allow convicted felons to live in our community. And for that reason, for several years, we've had the lowest percentage per capita of police calls in the community. Thank you very much.
Are you going to be the last one, or will you wrap it up for us?
Hi, my name's Bonnie Olson, and I live at 17252 North Creek Drive. I bought my home 19 years ago as a single mom, and the affordability, and since Haven Park has taken over, my rent has doubled. And as a senior wanting to retire, there's a lot of seniors in our park, and when you pay $800 for lot rent, and when I would, I've looked at selling my home, because I have done numerous things to it in the past, I couldn't even sell it because people couldn't for what it's worth, because people wouldn't be able to pay the $1,000 plus a mortgage. Why would they do that? They'd go into a home instead. And it's like, and having them go down my road, go around the curve and into that field, across that bridge, they'd be going 100 and how many cars every day going past my home? My grandchildren, we live in the very back. They play out there. They play in the front yard. That's not going to be something that will be safe to do. Thank you.
Hi, Dylan Khan, 5820176 Street West. I was at the first meeting. I have just a couple of concerns. My first one was the animals. I brought that up at the first meeting. They made it very clear, it's profits over wildlife, it's really all that matters. Second one is, if you just do a quick Google search of Haven Park and all the reviews that they get, it's not just North Creek that sees these unnamed things. It's in Iowa, it's in Utah, it's in Rochester, it's all over. It's not just North Creek that they're not maintaining. They're increasing the rent with the promise of increasing services, but they actually decrease the service while still increasing rent. That doesn't make no sense to me, but you guys are supposed to be, you know, the one that makes decisions based on the people, but we're the people and you heard our voice. So, thank you, guys.
I appreciate you guys sharing your concerns. I have a whole list of questions. Some of these things, I know they've been addressed in Planning Commission and other, but I just want to bring them up. So, if you want me to fire through them for you? The first question was related to basketball court safety. At one point, I think you mentioned talking about a speed bump on North Creek. So, if you wanted to talk about the safety, about the playground and that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you want to?
Yeah, we just, we tried to locate the, there's an open space on the northeast corner, and open the pond in the southeast. We have a play set down in the southwest corner, and then we put the court up in the northwest. We tried to basically put those at all corners, open space or rec areas at all corners of the property, and then we located the storm shelter right in the middle of the property. As far as traffic around the basketball court, I mean, wherever we locate it, there's going to be a road adjacent to it. I'm not, I'm not sure what the option is there.
Okay. There's questions about storm shelter and state requirements. Can you talk a little bit about meeting the square footage requirements and et cetera?
Yeah, so I think the letter that you received had a square foot per occupant of four feet. This one's actually sized at four and a half feet per occupant. Where we differ with theirs is we're sized for two and a half residents per home. They were using four residents per home for their number. It's actually oversized for what we calculated. It's calced at 3.3 residents per home, so we're working with a licensed architect that has done these and is familiar with the state code and FEMA requirements.
Can I just follow up a question to that?
I was going to say, our census numbers is 2.9 is average for Lakeville. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was going to ask you if you've done a census on what the occupancy is on the current residents that are in the 150, I'm just a rough guess, 150 trailers that currently exist. What is your average occupancy?
I have that number now, but it's available. I didn't pull it for this meeting.
There's a question about requiring aesthetic changes in the former park. Did you want to address that? Aesthetic changes? There was a comment about requiring changes to the outside of their, of the current units.
Oh, of their homes. I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that's not our intent. Obviously, there are rules and regulations. We want to have a good curb appeal and, you know, making sure that the skirting's intact and everything like that. So, that's going to stay, and I think that everybody agrees that that should stay from the city to neighbors. Everybody wants some, a good-looking community. As far as like making them get a pitch on their roof or vinyl siding on their home, that's not the case. We're not expecting that. We, I believe that homes of all ages can look good, and even though we've got, you know, going to have brand-new homes in this area, doesn't mean that we're going to be flipping out everybody's, you know, removing homes and putting in new ones. That's not the intent.
There was a question about the bridge, and I think this was addressed in planning, but something about flooding and some wetland stuff, if you want to talk about.
Yeah.
I think you're upsizing it or something.
Yeah, so we worked with Collins Engineering, a local engineering firm. They did an evaluation of the bridge. They recommended improvements we need to make to the bridge to accommodate all allowed in emergency traffic, Minnesota Department of Transportation traffic. So, those are incorporated in the plan. The width is, it's 31 feet, so it is a two-lane road. Wetland delineation process, we've been through the wetland delineation process. We're currently in the final stages of that with a no-loss certificate to Army Corps of Engineers. They've already concurred with our initial, initial report to them, so we don't believe there's any wetland issues. Stormwater, we've gone through the city's review on that. The south pond is, per city code, it's greater than four feet. That's to ensure that you eliminate mosquito issues as much as possible. The north basin is an infiltration basin, so that'll be dry. There is no standing water anticipated in that one. And then, just to back up on the storm shelter, that will go through a city commercial building code review, so that you're not approving that, you know, with this, with this conditional use. That is another step.
Got it. There's a dozen mentions of these were to be rentals, but I think...
Yeah, the intent is to sell all of the homes.
There's questions about a dead end at Pilot Knob and the access there. I'm sorry, I wasn't really clear on what the question was, but does that make sense? Something about access off of Pilot Knob.
I guess I'm not familiar. There's two, there's, out of North Creek Estates, there's two access points onto Pilot Knob. We did, we worked with a third-party engineer. As requested by the city, they did a traffic report for us, and they, with this project, there's no improvements warranted on Pilot Knob.
And then, there's been a lot of questions about crime-free addendums, background checks and those things, and did you have a response to that?
Yeah, we also run background checks on anybody who comes into the community, rigorous background checks that we'll look at. We also don't allow any convicted felons, anything like that. And so, we, to be transparent, the first time I heard about the crime-free, drug-free addendum was at the planning and zoning. I reached out to our legal team, and they were already implementing that into all of our Minnesota leases, and as of this week, that's already being put into our leases. So, anybody coming into North Creek moving forward will have the crime-free, drug-free addendum put into it.
Okay. Yeah, John?
I'd like to ask a question about that. Yeah, I noticed in the meeting, when I watched the Planning Commission meeting, that that was news to you. It's been in existence for quite some time. So, what about people that are currently leasing there? Is the drug-free, crime-free addendum going to be, are they going to be required to sign that as well?
I am not sure on what the legalities are of that, so I don't have a great answer for you on that one. I'd have to look into it. I don't, I don't know about how that would, how we would be able to do that and make sure that it's all legal and everything.
Okay. And then, also related to that, that addendum is a powerful tool, as long as there's a relationship with the people that enforce the laws in this community. And so, can you just describe what your relationship is with the Lakeville Police Department with crime-free multi-housing, how you share information, how you talk back and forth?
Yeah, I unfortunately am not the best one to speak to that, as, you know, I'm not directly into the operations of this community. I'm into, I'm under CapEx and development. I don't know if you're prepared, Laura, to speak to that at all?
Hi, my name is Laura Kowalski, and I'm their RVP. At this time, I can't speak to exactly the relationship that Jim has with city, but I do know that he is in contact with them anytime we have any issues, but I don't, I can't speak exactly to his relationship.
That's, thank you.
I did do a recent search. Again, it was on LexisNexis, where you can look in a GIS system, and I did do some research on the crime in the area. And to both, I think, Country View and North Creek's credit, it seemed rather low for the, you know, time period that I was looking at. I was looking at roughly the last 12 months, and both North Creek and Country View were what I would consider relatively low.
Ms. Goodrow, do you have an update for us on the occupancy CUP items?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and talking to our city attorney and reviewing the email that you had received from Mr. Van Tassel. It appears we are able to add some conditions. It's a little bit different approach to a CUP.
If I can interrupt real quick. I would say that there's a question about this, adding this, although they've agreed to this requirement, they will be required to sign it, but I just want to make sure that you're aware that there will be maybe a question about the enforceability.
Okay.
That being said, we've got the conditions that are in your CUP document this evening. So, what I would recommend is making some revisions to this, and as City Attorney Paylor has explained, we would add their signature line on this. So, once the mayor signs, the applicant will be required to sign as well. Couple of things that are already in the conditions is the fence. We have stated the condition that the fence be installed on the west and south property lines prior to any issuance of home permits. So, there's going to be a building permit issued for each individual home site. So, all of that fencing needs to be installed prior to that. Number three requires that that chain link fence be at six feet. So, council will need to discuss the request of Country View for that to be raised to seven feet or not. The gate is stipulated at six feet. Ownership of the gate is not stipulated at this time, and that was a comment that was raised by the owner of Country View. What was included in Mr. Van Tassel's email was several things that we could add as stipulations to be completed prior to home sites within the new portion. Those would include resurfacing of all existing driveways, so all home sites, all the existing driveways, installing new community signage, and I am told that includes the monument signage, any community signage that is throughout the development, directional signage, stop signs, et cetera, upgrading all mailboxes throughout the community, and then enhancing the playground, replacing that playground, and then working with a tree professional for removal of dead and dying trees. So, those are the stipulations that Mr. Van Tassel has agreed to add to this conditional use permit request. Again, these would be added, required prior to issuance of new homes within the new development. Does that make sense?
But not prior to construction?
Yeah, so it doesn't mean prior to construction of the roads. It means prior to placing a home within the new portion. Because I do agree, there is benefit of when they are building out the roads, you've got that equipment here to then resurface the driveways and so forth. So, there is some logic to that progression, but all of this work would have to be done before they got a home permit. So, our inspections department would have to check with planning staff before any homes are, permits are issued, and we would ensure all of these improvements are completed. So, it's a little bit different approach, but he's in agreement.
Councilmember Bermal?
One quick question about the gate. There was talk earlier about how that would open access locking. Is that something that we can include?
Yeah, and I will rely on these two gentlemen, fire and police chiefs. I don't know how our, if they could help me with some wording on that, but it sounds like we have some examples. I would just need a little bit of warning, I'm assuming lockbox.
I think we wrote something for the Lakeville Christian Church in the last 24 months when that was built, and it's a pretty, so I'm sure we have standard. Yeah, Chief, did you want to? Okay, so we'll work out some sort of arrangement with that.
Yep.
Okay. Council, other comments or questions? Yeah, Michelle, Councilmember Volk?
I have a question for the resident, or the management, I guess, of North Creek. Do you have onsite managers and onsite?
Please, yes, please. We'll just...
Onsite managers and onsite maintenance people?
Yeah, we do.
And where are they housed out of?
How, like, where's their office? So, there's a, there's a community office right on North Creek, right on North Creek Drive.
Are they full-time?
They are full-time.
So, the residents, they're available for the residents during the regular workday, et cetera, for them to access?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, it, I hope that, are they hired by your firm?
They are, yeah. So, we're both owner and property management.
Okay.
Councilmember Lee?
A question about the construction plan, and having driven through, there are narrow areas to get through. I'm not concerned about the typical car coming through, but when it comes to construction vehicles, at that, when we get to that point, what's the plan for access there and phasing that in so that it doesn't become an issue?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to coordinate, obviously. You know, we'll have to coordinate with residents, we'll have to coordinate with the construction company to just make sure that as heavy equipment's coming through, it's as little disruption as possible. that as heavy equipment's coming through, it's, it's as little disruption as possible. And so, yeah, that will have to be what we'll need to do.
Can I clarify that there is only one option, right? In terms of access to the site? And that'll be through North Creek Drive?
That will be through North Creek, yeah. That's, that's the only option we've got.
And can you talk a little bit more about what construction looks like? Are we excavating? Is it, I mean, guessing pouring pads? What other things go into that process?
Yeah, maybe defer to Joe here a little bit on the technical details of that.
Yeah, it's similar you'd see to any standard subdivision development. There'll be a mass grading, excavation of the pond, followed by underground utilities. There's water already stubbed to the property. There's sanitary sewer lines that run along sides of the property. So we'll be tying into those existing utilities. Come back with paving and then finish grading. And the final thing will be the infiltration basin in the northeast corner, because that stays untouched until you're, you're done with the site.
Where is the water and utilities stubbed from?
There's, is it Faraday Road is the road to the west, I believe, or, I can't remember the exact.
Yes, Faraday Lane or Fairfax Avenue.
The road directly west of the site. There's water that's stubbed out to the west side property. So that's where we connect. And then there's sanitary sewer that runs along the east boundary and the west boundary of the property currently. Gotcha. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, counsel?
I have a comment.
Councilwoman Volk?
So this is just a comment.
Nope, sorry. No, I'm sorry, we're done. Go ahead.
So, first of all, when my husband and I first got married, because like you just need to know this information, I know, but whatever. We first got married, we bought a trailer and we lived in Countryview Park for many years. And it was a very pleasant experience, and that was our first little starter home. We were able to, because that park is, Countryview is well-managed, we were able to turn around and sell that home to move into our current home that we live in. So I have very fond memories of living there. And even back in, now, this was a long time ago, so this was in 1981, it was still difficult to get out on Pilot Knob Road even back then. So I truly get trying to get out and take your life in your hands type of attitude. And now, obviously, everything's grown, Farmington, Lakeville, Rosemont, and the traffic there is unbelievable. So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I know what it's like to live in a manufactured home community, and I know what it's like to be close to your neighbors and also want that feeling of safety. And that's important. I think the tough part about all of this is that when we go through this process of of approving, disapproving, or whatever of this CUP, is that it's not that we didn't listen to you, but legally, a lot of things are, our hands are tied too in the fact that there has to be a really super-good reason why we would ever say no that would hold up legally in a court of law. And I know that's not, you know, very helpful. The only thing that I guess I can say is, is that we will do our best to, I think with the additions that I think we're gonna be adding to this document, that hopefully it will be the beginning of helping your, the North Creek community out in that it will actually get enhanced. And what do I want to say? Make it desirable for everybody to live there. Because in order for them to sell those 140 homes, 130, whatever it is, it has to be a lot better than what it looks like now. And they're, otherwise, they're not gonna sell them. And, and that's to no fault of you folks. That's to the, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna be blunt. In my mind, it's the fault of previous management. And now you've got the new owners trying to play catch-up. And so, and it takes a lot of money to play that catch-up. And so I'm hoping that when we get done as a council of trying to determine, you know, what requirements that we legally can ask of the owners, that this will be something that will actually be beneficial to your community. And all I can do is say that you folks need to really keep the pressure on them to make sure that they are servicing you. You are their customers, you're paying the rent. And I, I know that it's expensive. Apartment living is expensive. And living in, owning your own single-wide or double-wide home is, you know, more preferable than living in a little box apartment. So I'm hoping that we can do the best that we can for these citizens.
We're just, we're out of that phase. If you want to ask her a question when the meeting's over, we can, happy to do that. So I'm not, we had plenty of time for, for public comment, so. Yeah, and that, we're, I don't have an answer for that, but we're just not at that phase of this conversation. Anybody else in the council that, Councilmember Lee?
I want to clarify for myself why the vinyl fence doesn't go along the southern boundary all the way. I don't remember what the rationale was for that.
That was at a request of Mr. Gufferson of, of Countryview. He, as he mentioned, his, I believe it's a southern fence. He says it's just wearing out, tearing down, so he wants something just a lot stronger. So we've agreed to doing the, the chain link fence along that, that southern boundary.
Because I thought I heard the opposite. I thought there was a desire for a vinyl fence for the.
So on the west, on the, on the west boundary, that's vinyl. It's a vinyl privacy.
Right.
And then, when it transitions at the gate, then it will transition to the chain link.
Okay.
And, and that was at the desire of Mr. Gufferson.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. In addition to landscaping, got it.
Other questions or comments or motion?
No, I'd like to know how we, what the, what the next doc, before I vote, I need to know what, get a clear idea what this document is going to contain then. What conditions?
So, yeah, I'll let Ms. Goodroad repeat that again, just so we know for when we have a motion.
What was in his letter, or?
She's got it listed.
Yep, so what I would recommend is, in addition to the fence being installed prior to home installation, that the applicant has to complete resurfacing of all existing driveways within the existing North Creek. Installing all new community signage in the existing North Creek. Again, that would include monument, we would list this, monument, community signs, directional signs, stop signs, any signage that's viewable in the community. Upgrade all mailboxes within the existing neighborhood and replace the park playground within the existing neighborhood. And then work with a professional tree company for removal of dead and dying trees within the existing community. So those items would be added to this list. And then finally, the gate, once it's installed, must include a key box for emergency services.
So maybe just to be clear, the first set of those would be condition 10? And then condition 11 would be the firebox access, the fire key access for the, for the gate?
Okay.
So there'd be 11 conditions as opposed to the nine?
Okay. Councilmember Lee?
So would the best next move be to take a recess moment, to get that drafted? Or how are we proposing this to?
I think we would make a motion on the 11 stipulations as discussed. And then, when I go through and sign the final document, it'd be included?
We would, if I could clarify one thing, Councilmember Lee, what I would recommend, and I can jump in if I may speak, prepare it, send it to the owner, have the owner sign it, like we do a development contract. Get that signed document back and then have the mayor sign.
So tabling this until a future?
You would be approving the 11 conditions tonight?
Yep.
And then it would be prepared and signed by the applicant and the mayor.
I see. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll take a motion. Councilmember Lee?
I move to approve the North Creek MHP conditional use permit and adoption of the findings effect, including the additional item 10 and item 11.
Is there a second?
Previously discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I, I want to thank you, Councilmember Volk, because you said a lot of things that I wanted to. And I think, you know, growth is hard, it really is. And these are the, we get projects like in front of us in every meeting that we have to deal with that growth. And at the end of the day, we have to balance existing residents and the property rights of those who own property and have the ability to legally do the investments that they are allowed to do. I hope that you all felt like you were heard today. And I can tell you're frustrated, I can. My, my hope really is, well, I, I think, I mean, I wanted to say, I think you guys got a good deal. There, the, we could have legally approved it and they could have done nothing. And so I want you, I want you, I know you're not happy. I'm just trying to convey to you that I felt that we listened to a lot of, and the Planning Commission and the new owners listened to a lot of what you had to say. And, you know, the owner of Countryview had said there were a lot of things that he had asked for that they ended up doing. It's, there's always a give and take. So I want, I know you're frustrated, I totally get that, I want to feel it. But at the same time, we have to balance our decision-making. Ma'am, we're in a new phase. I'll, happy to talk to you after the meeting, but we have to get through our, our voting and our meeting. So again, I just want, I totally understand, I get where you're all coming from and the frustration. As Councilmember Volk said, you know, it's, I would really encourage you to hold, you know, you're the customers and hold them to account, and we will on those investments, because they will not be putting a home down without the investments into the, the previous neighborhood. And so with that, unless there's any other comment, I'll.
No comment, babe. We've heard a lot today. We've added some stipulations. I would benefit if the city attorney could just give a quick recap when we're considering a conditional use permit, what that, what we're approving and how we're looking at that.
And on the zoning, is that what you mean?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
When the city considers a conditional use permit, I usually recommend that to them that they consider it as a, it's a permitted use, that you are authorized to put conditions on reasonably related to the specific application as long as it does meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So the city has much less discretion in considering a conditional use permit than in other action items that it may, that may come before it. So you're very, you're very much limited.
Roll call, please.
John, Berman?
Aye.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Hellyer?
Aye. Thank you. Again, I appreciate that you come into all these meetings and I, I'm happy to stay and chat with you after. I, I know you're frustrated. We'll move on to items eight and nine, unfinished and new business. Okay, with that announcements, our next work session is Monday, February 24th. And our next city council meeting is Monday, March 3rd. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
For adjourn.